Good afternoon, everyone. Before we begin our traditional method of opening, I'd just like to read a statement here. Last Wednesday, this community was saddened to learn that one of its strongest advocates had passed away. Bob Potma, a lifelong resident of Sheldon, saved for a couple of post-high school years working construction in California, died at the age of 80. As a contractor and owner of Potma Sigma Construction, he has left a legacy of structures that were built to endure, as the company motto states. Driving through the community and surrounding area, one can observe numerous homes, schools, churches, hospitals, commercial buildings and offices that were built with the quality and the workmanship that became a trademark for his firm. As a developer and a builder, Bob and his crew have changed the landscape of Sheldon, especially the business community. Highway 60 Plaza, Arlington Plaza, and Prairie Queen Court are just some of the business adventures that came about because of his vision for enterprise that would replace rundown or burned out facilities and provide space for new or expanding businesses. While others may have been hesitant, Bob had the confidence to move forward with a belief that Sheldon has what it takes to make it work. On a more personal note, I was privileged to see a side of him that many did not get to witness. There's not a time in my life where Bob was not a part of it. As a close and personal friend of my dad, I've had many fond memories as a child of our families socializing together at summer holiday get-togethers, winter getaways at Lake Okoboji, and New Year's Eve parties with lots of kids playing in the basement while the parents played cards upstairs. I will always remember him as a loving and devoted husband and father. Most importantly, Bob was a Christian who sought to follow the Lord's will in all he did and bring him the glory. That was reflected in the way he lived his life and treated others, and many times, and many people have been touched by his generosity. He was a humble man and was not comfortable being in the spotlight, and were he here today, I would probably be embarrassing him. But the fact remains that Sheldon has benefited from the role he played in this community, and he will be missed. I sent these go out to his family and loved ones. I wish them God's blessing as they deal with the grief of his passing while taking comfort in knowing that he is celebrating the riches of heaven. At this time, I would ask that you stand and join me as we observe a moment of silence in Bob's honor, and then follow that by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if we could have a roll call, please.
Pete Hamel?
Here.
Sean Brewster?
Here.
Brad Hand?
Here.
Tom Eggers? Brad, oh, I'm sorry, I've got Brad down twice. Wayne Barahona?
Here.
Here, Ian.
Hey, you get paid twice.
Yes.
Get two votes.
All right, two votes.
All right, you have before the agenda, a motion to approve that, please.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hand?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
All right, now, we have reached the point in our agenda where we have a public forum for verbal and/or written comments. Are there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council at this time with your public comments? See no one there. Anyone, anybody on Zoom? Todd?
There are two, and I just made it so they can unmute themselves if they choose to.
If you're listening by Zoom and you have public comments you'd like to make, please indicate so by unmuting yourself first of all, and then letting us know. See nothing happening there. I'd like to move forward then to our consent agenda items. There again, need a motion to approve those?
So moved. Support.
Roll call, please.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hand?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Okay, moving on then to new business, since we have no old business. First item up for discussion is the South Fifth Avenue Farm Lease. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing regarding that matter. Is there anyone here or listening in on Zoom that would like to speak to that? Again, seeing nothing going, were there any written comments addressing that at all, Ange?
No.
Okay. Motion to close the public hearing, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Hand?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
All right, then you have before you the resolution approving that lease. Need a motion to approve that as well.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Nearly none, roll call, please.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hand?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
All right, moving on, we have the request for a lighted crosswalk sign at the intersection of Washington Avenue and Sixth Streets, coming from the East Elementary Friends of East, specifically Samantha Horpert and Savannah Sauer. Anything you'd like to speak to on that? Sam?
No, I believe that Sam is here. Did you want to say anything on this side?
Yeah, this is your turn. I don't think we needed to say anything unless you guys had any questions.
Chicken.
If I might, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, would you?
So Todd and I do support the request. I know, Todd, if you wanted to talk a little bit about the timeline.
So the, if approved, the contract we would probably get would be with general traffic out of Spencer. That's who we use for all of our stoplight stuff. They provided two options, as you can see in the report, one just shy of 4,000, one shy of, just shy of 5,500. Excellence for East Committee supports the $5,500 one. Picture of that packet, that is much more visibly a sign, I think, and it also will have more lights to flash. I would guess if we ordered it, we could have it up in a matter of a few weeks.
Just for clarification, this would be two signs for each direction on the street, as I understand, correct?
That is correct. Yeah, one for northbound traffic and one for south. So there's currently four signs out. There's a crosswalk ahead, and then there's the actual crosswalk sign with the arrow pointing down. This sign would place the sign where the arrow points down. And we'd be able to program it kind of as laid out in the letter you got from Dallas.
And the price is for two signs as well?
That is correct.
Not per?
Correct. That's a total, two signs.
Are there any other questions?
I guess, I assume that we can do this.
The budget allows for it?
Well, I mean, it's 5,500 bucks that I wasn't planning on spending, but it's, I'll find a home. Or I'll skip someplace else where.
Okay.
I'd hate to say we're going to budget for it and then wait, I mean, if you're actually in support of it, and then wait until July 22.
Okay.
Because we just got done with the 21-22 budget.
Yeah. So would you do this right away or wait until we roll into the new budget year?
If you guys approve it, I think the goal would be to put it up prior to spring walking time if we can sign it at time.
Okay.
Okay. I know Brad has seen it as well as I on EMA that we've had too many calls to that corner for vehicle versus pedestrian accidents, so I'm in support of that.
History there, you know, applied extra paint this year. It's my understanding that that's maybe helped some, isn't the all answer. I have personal feelings that there's maybe a little better places for a crosswalk than where that one is located, but to make the intersection safe, I think you would need to re-sign stop signs and everything else. I know the past police chief had concerns about doing that, thinking it would back up traffic in different direction on Sixth Street if you stopped after. Certainly think this would improve the safety of that crosswalk.
All right, any other thing? Anybody else have anything else they want to add?
Savannah?
Yes, please step forward to the mic.
I'm here, okay, I don't have any questions.
And state your name, too, once you get there, for the record.
My name is Savannah Sauer, and on behalf of Excellence for East, we thank you for considering doing this. We've also talked, and we've had a lot of parents bring up to us, so just as a topic, there's also some danger, we think, on the Sixth Street, right across from the school. I brought our crossing guard here that usually does our duty in the morning, so just as a, I know, key witness there, but just for future thought, wondering about flashing lights also maybe at that spot. We do have a lot of incidents in the morning, and she can probably vouch for that, too, and talk to, a lot of people just not paying attention in the morning, so wondering if even flashing lights there. We do have signs already. We have a crossing guard there. The school has made every effort to make that a safe spot, but there's still some concern there. We do have about roughly 50 kids that walk even during the cold right now, and that will only increase as the weather gets better. So when those kids leave, we are kind of concerned about traffic in that area. It is high traffic from high schoolers, from parents picking up kids, with Children's World right there, too. It's kind of a concern for us. I guess Lisa would like to say some more, too. She's there, kind of more in the action on that one. So just as a heads up, we're kind of looking at something, even recommendations on what to do at that spot.
I'm Lisa Welch, and I work at East Elementary, and I'm a parer there. And Wayne, you're going to, most of you guys are going to recognize this. This was my husband's from EMA. I wear this every morning because people don't see me. He also bought me these flashing lights. I have a stop sign, I hook one on the top of the stop sign, and I have one hooked on the front of me. We have so many kids that are walking across that crosswalk, and most of the time, we have parents, we have high school kids that are on their cell phones because I see them look down, they're not even paying attention. They get by me, they rev their engines. There is, I don't think on that block, there is a speed limit sign, I don't believe. But I was also wondering if, and I know other schools do this, between Normal College Avenue and Jefferson Street, if we could put a no-through traffic during that bus drop-off time. Because I stand out there, and I wait to see a child coming from the other side of the street, and then I have to go out into the middle of the street. I've almost been hit on numerous occasions. We have little ones that get off of the bus, and if we're not paying attention, some of these little people just want to dart onto the street, and I'm the only one out there. So my concern is, we're going to have an accident right there in front of the school. We need some, like on Washington, the flashy lights, I mean, right now with daylight saving time, I still wear these because I'm scared. And when the buses are parked there, I have to creep up and peek around the bus to see if there's anybody coming. I have turned in numerous license plate numbers to the high school because they do it on purpose. This morning, for instance, I had one guy that I turned in, he got by the crosswalk and then stepped on the gas and spun out away from me. I don't know what's done once I get a hold of the high school, but I thought it would be really probably helpful if we could block off, they could still get into Children's World, and they could also still get into the Circle Drive by East Elementary, but if we could block that off just in the drop-off period, I'm out there from quarter to eight to quarter after eight, then the last bus is gone, and then we probably wouldn't have to worry, and all the kids are in school by then. But if we could put a no-through traffic sign on either end and then pull them away as soon as the buses are all gone, just for our kids' safety.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
May I, Mayor?
Yes.
We have the one, the one sign on the agenda, and I know that that one was reviewed with the chief of police. Also, the rest has not been reviewed, to my knowledge, so if you give us an opportunity to review that, we'll bring back a recommendation to you on the other.
Well, I would almost think that, wouldn't it, wouldn't it be better if this came from the school, goes through the school board, the administration, comes through it that way, the request? Because they're the ones that, they're the ones that control the traffic.
It would be, it would be good to have the school district's support. I know I had, I had messaged Corey Meyer on this one, and he was all in support of this one, so.
I think you have a Children's World element there, too, and I suppose they're intertwined enough that, but I can imagine that some of that traffic is people trying to get their kids into the daycare at the same time that school is getting, or is school starting and that sort of thing. I know I ran into that when I was bringing my daughter to preschool, so.
And there is a budgeting element to this. I mean, two or three we can handle if it's, if it's 10, because I anticipate there will be more, more requests because of the popularity of these, because I think this, this one on Washington and Sixth will be pretty popular. But, you know, I have, I have seen in other places, these types of signals go in and having a crossing guard element and, and additional enforcement is necessary, too, because eventually the newness, even if it flashes at certain times, the newness of that also wears off. And this is not a push button. This is activated by time, so it's going to go off at the same time every day, so people will get used to that, too. So this is not a standalone solution. I think there's other actions that, that we need to take together with, with the school district and parents to ensure safety, so.
I think, you mentioned about patrolling that a little more. I think perhaps Scott would take that under advisement, too, that during those drop-off times, we probably up the police presence for a time, however long that needs to be, just so that people know that this is something we want to take care of. We need a motion to approve that yet, right?
Yes.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion for them along those lines?
Make the motion to approve them. Option two, for the lighted crosswalk sign.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamel?
Aye.
Hand?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Good, moving on then to item C of our new business, review the operations of the Community Services Center. Sam, I imagine you want to speak to that at this time?
Thank you, Mayor. My explanation speaks for itself. Hopefully you've had an opportunity to read it, and if you have any questions, stand by to answer those.
I think your, your purpose here now is just to discuss it and kind of get, take a temperature to see where we're at in terms of opening things up again, is that correct?
Yes, we did receive, and as you know, we've, Village Northwest Unlimited has been doing our janitorial services for years. They do a tremendous job. They were recently forced into the situation of having to increase their prices. They were willing to forego their price increase until July 1, since we're in the midst of a budget year, but their costs are going up substantially because the cost of cleaning supplies has gone up. So their, their cleaning remains at the same high standard that it's always been, but they're not doing additional cleaning, or have we asked them to, due to COVID. We also, Angie and I did bring in a cleaner to do, clean the carpets in the Terrazza flooring, did a nice job there, but our cleaning costs in general have gone up. So what hasn't gone up are the rental rates. There are, there are other options in town now for, you know, with the pavilion that we didn't have previously. So Angie and I recommend that if we move forward with reopening, that you give us a chance over the next couple of weeks to bring forward a new rate schedule for, for consideration, or if you'd prefer, and last time we brought this up, the council recommended that we just wait, and that's an option, too. So that's why we're bringing it up in this vein rather than putting more, more work into the research.
Have you had a lot of requests for rental?
I have not. I've had, I've had one, and that actually came in today, just asking the status. The shooting sports team is interested in using, we have a resolution with them to allow them to use the basement or up here for practice. I'll let them know that we're going to be talking about it today.
There's a few people that rent it for graduations and that?
Typically, there is.
Typically?
We haven't received any calls regarding that yet.
I would say let's move forward in opening it up, you know, at least so we can be open by May for, you know, in case people want to use it for graduation. And I've had some comment, being on the pavilion board, that, you know, trying to maintain some congruency between, you know, since they're both city-owned buildings, why one is open and one is not. So I think that, you know, what's good for one should be good for the other. Obviously, there are other factors at play here, but that was something that was brought up during one of our board meetings, so.
I definitely think we need to re-look at the rates, though, if we haven't looked at them since 1998.
You know, there are those, the regular users like Prairie Queen, Prairie, not Prairie Queen, but Nune Kwanis has been meeting in one of the churches in town, as I understand. Normally, they would be meeting weekly, on a weekly basis on Mondays. Is there another regular user, too, or somebody else, right?
Kelly Lux and the Dinner Date.
Oh, yes.
Kwanis, too, right?
Kwanis on Mondays, and then the SCDC typically has used it for our monthly luncheons, a third Thursday.
Oh, yes, that's the other one I was thinking of.
Yeah, third Thursday of the month. So I know our board is eagerly looking at trying to get back to that, so we would look at using.
One, if I might?
Yeah.
One option to consider, and this is something Angie and I talked about, is, you know, one option you could do is you could open it up to the, the community groups, but not do the individual rentals, the individual, you know, at least for a while. The individual rentals is where the, the cleaning expense comes, it's where the confrontations usually occur regarding deposits, and, and, you know, that is an option to, you know, to, to consider. I don't know, Angie, if you want to, want to expound on that at all?
My feeling is it's, it's work to get it open, and increase the rates if we need to, and start to get things back to normalcy.
So we'll work on an updated price sheet, and we'll bring it back to the next meeting for your consideration, so.
And then hopefully we could be ready to go if somebody wants to use it for graduation.
Yeah, for sure.
Like the community groups, do they pay a fee to use it, or is that just the Kwanis and SCDC?
SCDC does not pay a fee. Kwanis pays, actually, Hy-Vee pays the fee.
Oh.
Dinner Date does not pay a fee.
Okay, because I was going to suggest if they don't, that we just open it up to them immediately and, and then work through the other before we decide to open it up, and then with the groups that are renting it on a one-time basis or whatever, but.
I'd be fine with that, open it up to...
The community groups will call.
Open it up to the community groups, and we'll bring forward the, the price sheet later, the next meeting. And I do think that for the other groups, we'll probably look at an increase in the deposit, and I think that will probably help us a little bit. But we, we have had some pretty serious issues in the past with, with messes afterwards on the weekends. We can address that in other ways.
Do you need a motion for this, or do we give them enough?
I think since we're reopening things to some extent, I, I would appreciate a motion to open it to the community groups and to ask staff to bring forward the pricing sheet for the rest.
I'll make the motion to approve the opening, the community center up to the civic groups, and look at the rate structure and have it opened by May.
I'd support that. Any other discussion?
I'm...
Sorry, was that Wayne with the second?
Yes. You say a shooting group?
Not bullets.
Practice?
Yeah, it was a, it was a separate resolution that was brought forward last year with the Brian Lauk and the shooting, the NCC Shooting Sports Group, and they, they come in.
It's not as dangerous as what it's called.
They, they come in, and they have a, they have a really...
It's a little tough on the windows.
They shoot targets, shooting.
With lasers, isn't it?
Yeah, lasers.
With lasers.
All right, we have the motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Hamel?
Aye.
Hand?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
All right, and at this time, we are going to close session, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, brief one.
Okay, we need a motion for that, then, please.
Then we move into closed session.
Second.
Roll call.
Hamel?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Hand?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, we are back in open session, and we are ready to discuss the resolution approving the contract for the five-year agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. So at this time, I would consider a motion for that, if you would, please.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion on that resolution that we have in our packets? Roll call, please.
Hand?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
All right, wrap that one up. Very good. Moving on then, Kurt, you have a housing report you'd like to present.
Thanks, Mayor. So I know Mike, or Sam did attach some stuff to the, to the agenda here, so kind of give you an overview of maybe, hit the high points on maybe what was in there. First thing I just want to touch on is maybe just a quick update on Sheldon Crossing and the residential development out east. I mean, obviously, that's our biggest inventory of lots, and we opened that thing up approximately 2013, 57 single-family residential lots, along with 4.1 acres of multifamily development ground. We've currently sold 18 of those lots, so there's 39 left in inventory. What, what is kind of neat about those numbers, that we've actually sold two of them in the last 10 days, one as recent as yesterday, and four of them over the last 60 days. So one of the things you always see with new development, sometimes it just takes a little while as that development kind of gets going, you can kind of see what it looks like, who those neighbors are going to be. Sometimes that helps stymie, or not stymie, but, you know, engage in some additional development. So I think we're starting to see that out there. We do currently have two rebates in place for purchase of lots, one of them being a $10,000 rebate off the cost of a lot to anybody who is interested in purchasing one, and the other rebate that's available out there is a $15,000 rebate, and that's for anybody who lives within the city limits of Sheldon. And the reason that rebate is a little bit different, you know, the Development Committee with SCDC has long-engaged conversations about this, but the idea behind a little bit more incentive there is to hopefully open up some internal housing, because that's more that affordable market that we talk about as opposed to new construction. So a little bit extra incentive helps open up some internal housing in Sheldon, which hopefully gets people that are looking to move to Sheldon in that more affordable bracket. So the other thing I wanted to highlight with not only Sheldon Crossing, but some of our other residential developments in town, including Trilogy, is we've had a lot of local investment from our contractors, and sometimes that goes unsaid and unheard, but if you look at the list within my memo, you see a lot of local Sheldon people, including Potma Sigma, Tom Van Dyke Construction, G&amp;E Cabinetry, Sawyer Construction, there's a number of them that have either built spec homes, or duplexes, or fourplexes. And L&amp;K Construction, for example, was another one that came to the table yesterday, with that lot that was sold, and they'll be building a spec home. So again, talk about opening up additional rooftops, it's great to have our local contractors involved, and we've been pretty blessed with that here over the last number of years with that as well. The 4.1 acres of multifamily ground, as we recall, was all sold back in 2017 to Eagle Construction for up to a two-phase project to create about 72 units here in Sheldon. The first phase was completed and opened up in 2018, which occupancy there has been hovering between 90 to 95%. You know, construction costs, you know, are the biggest concern right now with the cost of lumber, and, you know, as far as getting that Phase Two, I think we're, you know, we're hopeful, and we'll continue to work with Steve Booty and Eagle Construction to facilitate Phase Two out east, too. We remain hopeful and good conversation with Stephen in making that happen. Last council meeting, I just want to follow up on this, too, and we did, we did touch, touch on that in my... touch on that in my memo, the thought of a housing study. You know, we, you know, what's our next step here with addressing housing? You know, is it buying more ground? Is it, you know, giving lots away? What is it? You know, I think we really need to understand what the demand here is, because that's going to be our biggest tool in our toolbox, is we're catering to developers who may be looking at multifamily ground, or for us as a city, understanding, do we just need more lots in our inventory? Do we need to buy more ground to facilitate additional development? So currently, we're in the process of waiting to receive two different quotes for a full-blown housing study for our consideration here in the future, hopefully as soon as March 3. And the other thing is, ironically enough, Iowa Economic Development Authority, and I'm not sure if you guys have seen this or not, just released last week the Rural Housing Readiness Assessment Grant, because as we always say, every community in northwest Iowa and the state are really dealing with housing issues, and the state is getting hammered with how can you assist us in our rural communities to address these issues because of, one, you know, construction costs, or two, it's hard to get developers to commit to rural communities because it's just a tougher, tougher market. So the Rural Housing Readiness Assessment Grant would provide assistance to us and cost share as far as what the studies are going to cost us, because they can range anywhere from $15,000 to $20,000 for a full-blown study. What this assessment would do would, would help and assist in that cost dramatically, but also engage us in some workshop-type of discussions. That'll bring all the key stakeholders to the table locally, us as council, our development group, bankers, realtors, and just some of those, you know, the contractors in town, too, bring us all to have that conversation, so we get the full-blown information to get this assessment as accurate as possible. And the other thing with these assessments, especially through the state of Iowa, is typically you'll need them to apply for future grants or tax credits. For example, we had to do an assessment back in 2016, which was required to be able to apply for any workforce housing tax credits for like what Steve Booty did. And so we feel, you know, in our, you know, in our conversation with other local developers, that this is going to be another key cog probably in a requirement for us, maybe to apply for additional tax credits or other incentives through the state of Iowa in the future. The Rural Housing Readiness Assessment Grant is facilitated through Iowa State Extension, so I've also invited at our March 3 meeting, Abbot Gaffey, who is actually a representative through Iowa State Extension, to come and present to us on what the Rural Housing Readiness Assessment Grant is all about, kind of what our steps would have to be throughout the process, so then we can kind of vet that assessment process through maybe just going and getting a full-blown study. My conversations with our other colleagues in northwest Iowa, and then through Iowa State Extension, and then through IEDA, is that most communities in Iowa will probably trend towards this assessment. One, because it, it helps with the cost, it's a lot less restrictive there, and again, I got to the requirement portion of applying for additional funding in the future. This would help us apply for those. But again, once we're through the assessment process, it'll really give us that roadmap, per se, of what the demand is, and give us that tool in the toolbox to cater to developers in the future. So that's one thing I want to touch on, too, because I know coming out of our last council meeting, that was one of the things that we're like, well, what is our next step for housing? Because what is affordable? I mean, that's always the million-dollar question, what is it? Well, I think we really need to get the stakeholders around the table, the realtors, the contractors, us as council and staff, and then our development group, to really get an understanding what that is in that assessment, then we'll really, we'll really tell the story for us to kind of go to work on, so. So again, March 3, we should have some, some options here at the table for us to consider. I think what, what Abbot Gaffey will be able to provide us through Iowa State will be really beneficial for us as, as a councilman as well, so. So I don't know if anybody has any questions. Again, construction costs are a concern right now, and we're hearing that throughout. I mean, again, it's not just local. COVID is really rearing its ugly head when it comes to that. Supply chain is broken. Brad, you know all about the supply chain. It's just, just getting supplies are, are difficult, and censoring such high demand, the cost is up here. However, we do feel that hopefully that gets rectified here over the next number of months, and that they come down to the, come down a little bit to where we're at before. Who knows if a lot of her get all the way there, but we feel confident that they'll, they'll come back, so. But also wanted to just take a moment publicly and just thank all of our local contractors, lenders, who help support this development of housing. It takes everybody kind of working together to make it happen, and we're fortunate to have a number of local contractors step up to the plate, put their, put their best foot forward in accommodating us. You know, Trilogy, for example, a couple of years ago, remember Bob Potma? You know, his great words with Bob earlier today, Mayor. I mean, he, he was one that always put his best foot forward, and he took a lot of risk not knowing what that return was, but he stood up here a couple of years ago and bought three lots out in Trilogy to help us with our housing concern, to build up to three spec homes. You know, he built one, he's got, you know, they got two lots out there to build a couple more. So out in Trilogy, you know, Seth Holligan and his group a couple of years ago bought a couple of lots, he built one fourplex, he has another lot that's available there to build another fourplex. G&amp;E Cabinetry owns a lot, has an option on a lot out east to build another duplex. You know, they built a duplex last year, sold both units, they have an option on another one. L&amp;K Construction just bought a lot yesterday, spec home project, Tom Van Dyke, spec home project out there, too. So, you know, I think they need to be thanked for their, for their commitment to Sheldon, and we need to continue to work with them to facilitate additional development, especially for housing, so. But with that, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, but otherwise, March 3 will be a, a good meeting for us to kind of walk through some, some stuff on what our next steps would be as far as the, the assessment through IEDA or a full-blown housing study. We can kind of look at some, what some of those numbers would be as far as cost.
Any questions? No question, but a comment. Thanks, Kurt, for moving, taking the bull by the horns here, moving forward with that after our last discussions, and that's, that's encouraging to see, and so we like to keep it moving forward.
Absolutely.
Anything else you'd like to share at this time?
No, I, no, I don't. I would encourage you to maybe look at the memo that, that Sam did attach, just kind of got some other high-point data in there that maybe be interesting for you guys to kind of look through.
The annual luncheon is next week, Thursday. I know you've sent an email encouraging all of us to be there if at all possible, so.
Yep.
Out at Pavilion. If you have an RSVP, do we need to do that soon?
Yep, absolutely. Yep, RSVP to Brandy at the office, so, yep, you bet.
You have how many rebates left? Four?
So we have four rebates, yeah. So we, good, thanks, Sam. So the Development Committee approved 10 rebates the last time we met, this would have been about a year ago. First come, first served, so once those 10 are gone, they're gone. But anyway, so yeah, good point, there's four rebates available for either the $10,000 rebate or 15. It doesn't matter that one or the other, it's a combination.
And it's applicable to any lot?
Any lot, any available lot out there. Yep, absolutely. And it's, it's actually off the price of the lot, so it's taken right off at closing. So Wayne, if you buy a lot out there, you know, Micah helps facilitate the closing on it, you take that $15,000 off the cost of a lot at closing, so. It's not after construction, it's right up front, which is kind of a nice little benefit.
Sure. All right. Thanks, Kurt.
Yeah, you bet.
All right, and we'll move on to your report, Sam, if you have anything.
Thank you, Mayor. Something very brief. The last three weeks, Brad Hent and I have had three meetings with three of the four townships that we serve for Rural Fire, and they've been very productive. We've gone from an average of $238 per section on nearly 60 sections to, two of the townships are up to 650 a section, and another is up to 750 a section. So one more on that later, but Brad, Brad and I want to thank him for his help on that. We've, we've come a long ways with that, and we appreciate the partnership with our townships. And then, once we bring that forward, then in the next couple, actually, as soon as next year, we'd like to have all, have new agreements with those, with, with those three townships as well, to bring them up to where we are with Lynn Township in Sioux County, which is the full 60.75 cents in valuation.
Okay. And that's it from you?
That's it.
Okay. Todd, anything else from you?
I don't think so.
All right. Kurt's gone. Scott, do you have anything you'd like to share at this time?
No, thank you.
Okay. Angie?
No, thanks.
Micah?
No, thank you.
Counsel to my left.
I got two things. One, I want to thank all the department heads for getting that CBA put together, and it'll be very nice to not have to do this every year, and just want to make sure that every, that you guys know that we're appreciative of the efforts and all the ongoing negotiation that went on to make this happen. Second, I was just, just prior to the meeting, made aware of a letter to the editor in which it, it appeared that I had made a joke of a wheelchair that had gotten stuck in, in Brad's report. So I guess what's, what's more troubling is I, I didn't even realize that I did it, so I just want to take this opportunity and apologize to Mr. Grine for just being thoughtless, is really what it was, so. I appreciate all the work that the fire department does, and I apologize that it came off as, as being flippant about it, so.
Right. Pete, anything from you?
Nope.
All right. Only thing I have, there is a Heroes Behind the Badges Blood Drive, I believe, on Monday, and as I understand, it's at the community center. Is that correct? No?